Good evening. Today is December 13th, 2022. The time is now 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is now being called to order. I do see we have a quorum present. We've asked Councilman Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community and districts. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Put within us, councilors, a revitalized energy of progress as we move into the new year 2023. Continue to remind us that all that we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in the service of humanity in Georgetown and humanity worldwide. My prayer is for peace worldwide. We pray for peace for all, and we ask of all these things in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We move down to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the meeting agenda as provided as published?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It has been moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Goggins. Any unreadiness? All on paper, please raise your hand. opposed? Okay, motion carries. You're called for any discussion. We move down to special reports. We have a nonprofit spotlight featuring the Palmetto Project. Joshua Bullock and Shelley Quinga.
Quinga.
Quinga?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Shelley Quinga. I am the Chief Innovation Officer at the Palmetto Project. We're a statewide nonprofit organization. Thank you for giving us this time today. I have with me Joshua Bullock, who is a lifelong resident of Pauli's in Georgetown County, who is also a member of our staff. So I hope you know the Palmetto Project because you vote. And when you go to vote, you get an "I voted" sticker. And we've been providing those stickers to the state for almost all of our 30-plus years of existence. But a specific program that I'm here to talk to you about today is called Insure South Carolina. Today is probably a really important day for you to know this because you just have another two days to enroll in health insurance coverage if you're not offered coverage through your employer, through Medicaid, Medicare, or the VA. So Josh is in your county and is available to assist folks with Medicaid, Medicare, and the Affordable Care Act plans. So the deadline for Affordable Care Act coverage is Thursday, the 15th, if you want your coverage to start on the first of the year. So there are many plans that are available with a $0 premium, so it won't cost you anything to be insured. It's a really important way that we want you to get covered because we want you to be able to work. We want you to be able to participate in your community, and we know that you can't do that if you're sick. You need to have coverage to do that. We're also very concerned about the end of continuous Medicaid coverage, which we expect to happen in the spring of next year. So during the pandemic, the federal government ordered that everyone who had Medicaid coverage, that that coverage would continue throughout the pandemic so that no one would be caught off guard and not be able to seek medical care. We expect that that continuous coverage provision will end in the spring. That means that every person who has Medicaid in the state of South Carolina will have to renew their coverage at some time during the next 12 months. So that is a 14-page application that must be filled out for anyone who needs to renew their coverage. So Josh is available in the county, and we've just been awarded funds from the Bonnell Foundation to hire a second person. So I'm also hiring if anybody is interested in becoming a licensed insurance agent with our nonprofit insurance agency to help people in Georgetown County. But we are especially interested in making sure that children, people with disabilities, pregnant moms, adolescents in particular, often go without Medicaid coverage because they're not sick as often as small children are. But they're out there, and they need to participate in sports. They want to get a driver's license and be out and about. So it's super important that our teens also have coverage so that they can participate in band, so that they can participate in chorus and have access to medications that they need. So if you know someone who has Medicaid, encourage them to reach out to us. If their address is not updated with the Medicaid system, they will not receive notification that they need to renew their coverage because that can only come by mail. And it cannot be forwarded because it contains protected health information. So most of the time, families find out that their coverage has been discontinued when they go to the doctor's office with a sick child. So we want to be proactive on this and reach out to as many people as possible to make sure that you know that your coverage is safe and secure. We have some flyers, but anyone can reach out to us. Our phone number is 888-998-4646. Anybody in the state can reach out to us, but we hope that everybody in Georgetown County is hoping to get covered and make sure that they have access to preventive and primary health care beginning January 1st at the latest, but if sooner than possible. Are there any questions that I can answer for council members?
Are there any questions from council members? No question. We thank you for the services you provide.
Thank you.
We move down to our 2022 Holiday Art Contest winners. This will be led by our Deputy PIO, Mr. Akers.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. I know you were probably expecting Austin Beard to be standing up here right now. Austin Beard, I am not. I will do my best. So what we have tonight for you is our annual holiday card contest. Around about the month of October, Georgetown County reaches out to the county school district and asks for assistance with helping us with our holiday card contest design each year. So it's a process that takes several months to get done. We started a little bit early this year because, as some of you know, I was going to be out of the office for a little while, so we got a head start this year. Had several hundred really wonderful entries. We take them all over to the administrative house and judge them. And we had some great entries, but there were three that really stood out above all the rest. So first, if I could have Ms. Jaylee Rogers and her family come up and join us here on the stage. Y'all just stand right here in the center, thank you. So this is Jaylee's design. As you can see, it is peace and joy. It's got a nice little river vista with a palm tree with some lights on it. Jaylee is in 11th grade at Georgetown High School, and we are so happy that she entered this contest. And Anderson Brothers Bank has sent along a little gift for you. And I'm also going to give you your original card back. And Mr. Chairman, would you join us for a photo real quick?
And we also have our superintendent here this evening also.
And if you'd like to come up as well and be in the photo, we'd love to have you. There you go. All right, let's give Jaylee a round of applause for her wonderful design. Next up, if I could have Ms. Cadence Moore and family come up and join us. This was Cadence's design. It's a close-up of a tree with an ornament that says "Happy Holidays" on it. Cadence is in the third grade at Sampit Elementary School. And I got to tell you, it was a really tough choice. It was like one or two votes between Cadence and first place. It was this close. Everybody loved your card, Cadence. And Anderson Brothers Bank has also provided a little surprise for you. And here is your original card back as well. All right, let's give Cadence a round of applause, please. And also wanted to mention the teachers for the winners. Jaylee's teacher was Mr. Ralph Westbrook, excuse me, at Georgetown High School. And Cadence's teacher is Ms. Adrian Crabtree at Sampit Elementary School. And last but not least, if Ms. Addie Hypatius and her family could come up and join us. Addie was our first-place winner this year. And this is her card right here. It's a wonderful drawing of Front Street in Georgetown. Looks like Santa Claus is right overhead, dropping off presents to all the good Georgetownians. Is something for you from Anderson Brothers Bank. Addie's teacher is Mr. Bill Peterman from Waukesha High School. And Addie is in the 10th grade at Waukesha High School. All right, let's give Addie a round of applause.
Congratulations to everyone who entered a card into that particular contest. And congratulations to those who have been awarded first, second, and third place. And thanks, Randy Ford, taking care of that. Okay. We'll move on down to the award presentation. Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here tonight to present an award to an entire department of Georgetown County. Tonight, the Finance Department is being recognized for their award of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And this is awarded by the National Government Finance Officers Association to those organizations that produce an award-winning set of financial statements. To let you know, this is a huge award. It's a national award, and it takes a lot of work and a lot of effort and dedication in order to produce a document that wins this award. The county and all governmental bodies in South Carolina is required to produce a set of financial statements. The financial statements that our finance department has produced is, instead of the annual financial report, they produce a comprehensive annual financial report. This means that they have went above and beyond what they are required to do in order to be as transparent and seamless as possible in the financial reporting for all the activities of Georgetown County. I'm sure I did something wrong. I don't know what caused that. So a lot of extra effort goes into producing that CAFR. And this is judged by a panel of folks that are from all over the country. Each set of comprehensive annual financial reports goes to various different judges. There's a set of criteria that they must meet. So a lot of detailed, extra work and late nights and long weekends goes into the production of this. And it's an outstanding achievement. And not only do they do it for the award, it actually pays dividends financially for Georgetown County. Once you have this level of document that you provide for investors, if you're thinking of doing bonds, you get much better interest rates for all of this, all of the hard work that goes into this, the budget document and the other things that our finance department does. So it's saving, it's not only letting us know how well the county's doing, but it's also saving the county money for decades to come. So with this, we'd like to ask the finance department and, Mr. Chairman, if you will, let's present officially the award to them and get some photographs if we can. But congratulations to our finance department. This deserves a big round of applause.
Thanks again to our finance department for all the work you've done and for holding Georgetown County high. We appreciate it. We move down to Resolution Number 22-31. Supporting the South Carolina American Revolution's 60th Centennial Commission and recognizing and approving the Georgetown County 250 Committee. We have a presentation by Mr. Bill Davies.
Yes, sir. My name is Bill Davies. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you about this. I'm representing a state commission that has an unpronounceable name, although you did a wonderful job with it. But essentially, what we're doing, we've been assigned by the legislature to lead the charge in commemorating and celebrating victory over Great Britain and our American Revolution, the thing that allowed this wonderful experiment in democracy to take place and form what we now call the United States of America. I'm also representing your local committee, which is being set up to pursue with us those same goals that I'll mention in just a moment. And that is the Georgetown County 250 Committee. This is going to be a diverse and inclusive group of people. It is still growing, but we have a base committee ready for recognition that we hope you will do. And that will help us as the state commission to start distributing some of state funds into this area to pursue our goals. The goals of both of these groups are, number one, education, because it will always be number one. But this education is to remind South Carolinians and teach the rest of the world the prominent role that South Carolina played, and it truly was, in winning independence. The second part's a little more mundane. As one of my compatriots says, "We want to get the tourists off of the interstates." Hundreds of thousands go through our state every day. "We want to get them off the interstate and, in this case, get them into Georgetown County. We want to have them come by our convenience stores and get a Coca-Cola and pack of crackers. We want them by 15 gallons of gas, if they can afford it." And then we want them to come to our restaurants and eat. We want them to spend the night here. We want them to visit places. We want to set up Revolutionary War-themed places for them to come so that they will do both of these things. Once they've done all that, it's fine with us if they get back in the car and go home. We don't want a doc. We want to have them down here for a while. So that's kind of what our goal is. Part of this is telling the stories of everyone who lived in the colony then of South Carolina from 1770 to 1783. And we want to tell the story. This is about a war. In most wars, you tell the stories of the men who fought on both sides. And we want to tell those stories. But we want to focus on what we call the underrepresented and unrepresented stories of people that lived in South Carolina at the time. And that starts And that starts with the women and children. Most of the stories are about the men. We need to talk about the women and children and the stresses that they underwent. You see on television, these pictures, these horrible pictures from the Ukraine, that happened right here. We need to tell those stories. And we need to tell the stories straight up front. They aren't always pretty. The stories of the persons of color and how they experienced problems in this. This was an integrated war. People of all colors fought side by side in this war, on both sides. And we need to tell all those stories. We need to tell the stories of the hundreds of thousands of African-American descendants who were here, free and enslaved, because they fought on both sides. We need to tell the stories of the Native Americans, the indigenous Americans, the people that are poorly called Indians, because that's a big deal. In South Carolina, in 1776, the main people we fought were the Cherokee. The outpost of European settlement was a place called 96 South Carolina, up in Greenwood County. The rest of the state up in the corner up there, where Thompson is, for those of us who went to Carolina, we think it might still be, but at that time, it was Indian country. I mean, it really was. The Cherokee were up there. And the fights that we had with the Cherokee were without hesitation to do all kinds of horrible things, both ways. But those are stories we need to tell. And that's part of our history. We're going to do that through a number of things, a lot of them focused around education. We're working with history teachers throughout the hierarchy of college, all the way down to grade school, how we can help them. We're going to put things on a website. We're paying for new research. We're doing a lot of things at the state level. But what we want to do, the main thing we want to do is work with these local counties. We want these county committees to decide what Revolutionary War sites they have that might attract visitors. And then we will help them develop those sites through grants from state government money. To do that with your commission, with your committee, we need your official recognition of that committee. And that's what we're really asking you to give us tonight. And as soon as that happens, we can start processing grants and help them build the committee, make it more diverse, make it more inclusive, and make it spread out geographically and throughout all of the people who live in Georgetown County. And then tell the stories of the ancestors of all those people. That's, that's where we're trying to go on this. Georgetown's got a great Revolutionary War history, whether you know it or not. I mean, you probably would just assume this. George Washington has more places and things named after him than anybody else in the United States today. Number three is a guy named Martini Lafayette. Lafayette landed in Georgetown County in 1777 when he came over here. You've got Lafayette talking. Anybody know what number two is? I doubt you do. He's a guy named Francis Marion. Francis Marion has the second most places named after him in the whole United States. And Francis Marion's focus during the Revolutionary War was Georgetown County. You've got a product. We can sell that product. Usually, when I appear before county councils, and we've got 27 counties that already have these approved committees and are already working, so we need to get moving in Georgetown. But usually, some council person will say, can you really sell a Revolutionary War site? So let me just throw out some real quick statistics, and you can make your own judgment. At town 96 I was talking about, it's about 1,700 people, nine miles from Greenwood. Greenwood's a long way from anywhere else. They've got two stoplights now. They put one up last year. And the place that was the best place to eat in town closed during the pandemic, and it was named Parties. That's what we're talking about. A small town, but about a mile and a half to two miles out of town is an extent earthwork fort from the Revolutionary War. It's a national military park. At national parks, you have to sign in, and you tell how many people are in the car, and you pay for them. So they've got good records. In the pandemic year, 2020, when Governor McMaster shut things down in March, only 95,107 people visited that place. 95,000 people. The state park system estimates that they spent $5.7 million. At Musgrove's Mill, which is another place out in the middle of nowhere, near where 26 splits to go to Greenville and Spartanburg, it's, you've probably been up the interstate. There's a seafood restaurant, tell you about five filling stations or something. There's an awful house. And then about 15 miles away is the State Park. In 2020, over 70,000 visitors registered there. They spent $4.1 million. The big boys are Kings Mountain and Calpens up on Highway 95. Kings Mountain had only 227,000 visitors in 2020. They spent $14.9 million. Calpens had 446,000, and they spent only $10.1 million. If we can set up places in this county, and they're here, you can identify them very easily here. Some counties don't have much going for them. You all are stacked with these things. If we can open these things up and bring these tourists in, I think we can make a major difference to the people at the lower end of socioeconomic scale. They're not going to be giving money to Boeing or Mercedes, anybody. They're going to be paying things to people that serve them in restaurants, to people that help them in convenience stores, to people that work in these parks and places. We'd appreciate you recognizing this group of your citizens who are willing to do the work with us at the State Commission. And in return, amazingly enough, I'm from the state government, and I'm really trying to give you money. That's what we would ask. We would appreciate your consideration and approval of the resolution of your group of citizens. Thank you, sir. And if I, if anybody has any questions, I'd have to run through this, but be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Any questions from council?
Yes, I have one, Chairman. Mr. Davies, thank you for your talk with us tonight. It was very informative, especially about the Pickens County part of the state. Do, will this have any thing to do with historical markers or anything like that? Because we have so many things that have gone on in Georgetown County, and there's not a historical marker indicating what happened at that place.
We, the whole idea is to create sites at which we will help the local groups identifying what they have, where it actually happened, which sometimes involves archaeology and underground rock. Getting the true story, because we want to tell the true stories, and then getting people off the road safely. You know, our South Carolina two-lane highways have got about 14 inches of shoulder. And if you pull off the side of the road, read a marker, if you've done it lately, you likely get hit by a truck of some sort, a dump lumber truck, a peach truck, a chicken truck, some kind of trucks will get you. We've got to get you off the roads. We've got to have a place for people to park. And then around there, we'll have interpretive signs. That's the general idea of the sites. But directly to your point, we have a marker committee. They've got about 309 markers that deal with the Revolutionary period in South Carolina. About 20% of them are either gone or need repairs. And we're going to try to work with local people to get those things done.
Thank you.
Mr. Davies, thank you for your presentation, sir. I concur with all that you've mentioned. As you mentioned, Georgetown is steeped in Revolutionary War history, and especially in my district, you have the Hoppsweet Plantation, which was actually built about 40 years before the Revolutionary War. And you have, it's the birthplace of Thomas Lynch, signer of the Declaration of Independence. We have to take a view to recognize our historical attributes, all the good things throughout our county. North to south, there's Plantersville, there's North Santee, which borders Charleston County, and we have the Waukesha Neck. And I hope our colleagues, we will be pursuing all that you mentioned, line up to receive your money and move on. Within our county, we have also a number of annual festivals. One is also the Andrews Historical Festival that has been building annually. And we'd like to direct many of our community anniversaries and festivals towards things that we can enhance not only that particular town, but the entire county altogether. So I feel that we will be looking forward to, and one thing, resuscitate our Georgetown County Commission, our historic commission, to also enjoin you in your efforts.
We hope all of them will join us. We certainly appreciate it. And, excuse me, in fact, about two weeks ago, we have quarterly, excuse me, quarterly meetings of the entire commission. And we had the meeting, the last meeting at Hoppsweet. So we were here in Georgetown. We spent the afternoon, the Monday afternoon, reviewing the local museums. And then we had a meeting at Hoppsweet, and then we toured the plantation grounds there. So we're very knowledgeable about that, and we certainly want to support all of those things you were talking about. And we have grants that may can help some of those presentations that you were speaking of in the county already.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional comments, questions from Mr. Davies? Seeing no hearing any, you've heard the presentations from, thank you, Mr. Davies. We appreciate all you do. And I'm, and council will now move forward on it. You've heard the presentations from Mr. Davies. Is there a motion regarding Resolution Number 22-31?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do approve Resolution-2231.
You have a motion from, motion for approval from Councilman Goggins. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks again, Mr. Davies. Sure. We move on down to our Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee funding recommendations from Ms. Kathy Grace.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman and Council. I am Kathy Grace. I am the chairman of the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee. And we did meet in November, heard from over 20 groups requesting funding. And the requests totaled $2,31,790. Unfortunately, we only had about $1.474 in the bank to distribute. So with about a, almost 30% shortfall, we did need to make some recommendations that did not meet full funding from some of the applicants. But you all should have a detailed summary of our recommendations that were made on the 17th of November that do total $1.474,395. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Grace. Any questions from council members?
Ms. Grace, again, what is the application process? When is it open?
The press and all the finance departments make sure I get my dates right. But the press is notified, I believe, in the fall. You have until October to get, or September? September to get your applications in. We meet once a year. We meet twice a year, but we meet to hear presentations in early November. We met to give recommendations on November the 17th. And this would be funding for now through 2023. And we won't meet again until November of next year.
Okay. By any chance, did you get an application for the, from the town of Andrews?
No.
Okay.
We had several infrastructure requests, several marketing requests, lots of festivals that will work through the Georgetown County Chamber and the TMC to promote the festivals. We had some from downtown Georgetown and other areas that ATAX money funds the infrastructure needs or setup fees that is not necessarily covered in the marketing. And the Chamber and the TMC work with the individual groups to do the marketing. And they brought some very detailed reports. And I have shared those reports on a monthly basis with members of the advisory council because we have seen, as you all know, an incredible growth in tourism and accommodation tax revenues, both locally and statewide, since the pandemic. The makeup of the accommodation types in Georgetown County lent itself to lots of people vacationing here because they could rent beach houses as opposed to high-rise hotels. And they are still seeing a relatively steady increase in accommodation tax revenues year over year.
Is there any particular legal structure? Must it be an LLC, or is that an issue?
It is not. Primarily nonprofits tend to make recommendations. We did have a for-profit group ask for monies this year to build a public restroom, but there were a lot of concerns and questions about it, its feasibility. So we have turned that group back to council, and I think, or back to Georgetown County. And I think they're going to work with the county on a solution up there.
Great, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from council regarding the recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like clarification. When the report is presented to council to act on, does it include a listing of every organization that made a request?
Yes, ma'am. I have a copy here. I just have one. It's in their packet.
Yes.
In the packet.
Yeah, there are 20 groups. Everything from Midway Fire and Sheriff's Office to Brook Green, several beautification committees, the county Garden City Beach Association, several groups.
Thank you, Ms. Grace. Ms. Grace, as stated, you've heard her presentation, and you have a list of all the requests listed in our package that we have received. So is there a motion regarding the Accommodation Tax Committee funding requests, funding recommendations, I should say?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move to approve the list of organizations that have been presented before us tonight for approval for funding.
There's a, there's a motion from Councilman Carolina for approval of the ATAX funding committee recommendations. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make the observation that, of course, in the time of scarce dollars, I'm happy that the ATAX is continuing to grow. And, but correct me if I'm wrong, the ATAX is really designed to promote tourism. And by strict definitional standards, sometimes I think we're moving more and more things that relate to operations into this particular budget. And I guess I would assume that's, again, the result of many demands on that, that budget, along with, again, shortfalls in other areas of the company or the county. But again, I've watched it grow and grow and grow in terms of how operations-related items are beginning to impact upon this particular budget. So I think it would behoove council just to monitor that, keep an eye on it, and remember what its intent is. And keep that in mind in future months and years, because at some point, the scale will tip, and there won't be funding left to promote tourism. It will all be given to other, other things.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Grace, for all the work you do. We move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield, use her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that the time period will be shown on the screen as to your three minutes. And when the time has expired, we ask that you conclude your comments. Thank you. Ms. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers sign up this evening? do we have any speakers signed up this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have ten speakers signed up this evening. And as you stated, each will have up to three minutes. And our first speaker is Jennifer Hunt.
My name is Jennifer Hunt. I'm on South Florida Avenue. And I'm part of a group in Andrews that are, we're trying to better Andrews. It's called Andrews Beautification Group. We are now a 501(c)(3) organization. And we are currently working on a blighted houses grant. And a few of us are presenting, I believe it's forty-one properties to the mayor this Thursday, in hopes to get a grant written. And I will help with that grant writing if someone asks me to. We have quite a lot going on in Andrews. We just had our parade Sunday, and we had a bonfire. And it was a lot of fun. We have churches and individuals that are decorating different parts, the light poles on Main Street. We have quite a few pastors in our little town that are really moving and shaking to get some of the, from Andrews. I'm here to ask if some funding for the Andrews Rec Department could be open on Saturdays and Sundays, or a few hours later during the week? Because kids need that time. I think the point is to get kids to have somewhere to go, especially on a Saturday. I think that would be behoove a lot of the young kids and teenagers. And if you don't mind, if you could try to get some more funding for the rec department. And, thank you.
Excuse me, good evening. I'm here to ask a couple of questions. Well, I'd like to know what's your plans are for the JJ Shark Park in Andrews. It's been quite a while that we haven't seen anything done since you guys are in charge of it. And also, what are your plans for the old Andrews High Jim? That's my two questions I have. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I do want to say, how about Jaylee and Kayden from Addy? That's so cool. I love that, seeing their creativity and their happiness in their faces. And Georgetown County has a nice holiday card. Council members and attendees this evening, my name is Gina Brown. I am the Director of Economic Development and Community Engagement for Silicon Ranch. It's nice to be back in Georgetown again. As many of you are aware, we have a new website that provides information about our solar facility in Lambert Town, LambertSolarSC.com. We appreciate those of you who have signed up to learn more about the project and have made comments. Also, we've been working with the county to find tune the decommissioning plan as recommended. Silicon Ranch remains committed to answering any questions this community has about the Lambert Solar Farm, whether those be in person, on the phone, via email, or via social media. As with all of our projects, we are landowners in Lambert Town. And this will be for the life of this project. What does this mean? It means we are not building this project to flip it. We are your neighbors, and we will be good ones. We emphasize a deep, long-term commitment to Lambert Town and Georgetown County. We are investing more than 200 million in Georgetown County to fund the installation of a local source of low-cost renewable energy generation to help power approximately 400,000 homes per year. To make this possible, no additional capital investment is required by the state, the county, or the utility. The installation of the project is expected to support more than 400 construction jobs, in addition to the multiplier effect that will benefit local hotels, restaurants, and retailers. In addition to the significantly, excuse me, significant capital investment, the project will contribute significant increase, more than 15 million of the lifetime and tax revenue, to support local government services and local schools. And beyond the capital investment, we are strong supporters of local causes, demonstrated most recently by a donation we made toward hurricane relief. And we look forward to future opportunities and partnerships. What this project offers is an increase in energy reliability, economic development, and even a chance to restore soil and revive and maintain its agricultural purpose. Renewable carbon-free independent energy matters more than ever. People matter most of all. And these things are not mutually exclusive. We have proven over the last twelve years that it is indeed possible to not only make solar do more, but to make the promise of carbon-free renewable energy that benefits people right here, where it comes from, a tangible and measurable reality. On behalf of Silicon Ranch, we wish you and your families a happy and healthy holiday season and a hopeful new year. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Polley's Island. And I'm here to discuss the business of county council. What is the business of county council? One might think, in light of recent decisions here, that the business of county council is to rubber stamp development in Georgetown County. However, reading through the county's comprehensive plan, it would appear that council members have larger responsibilities to be a good steward of our community during their time in office. Reading through this comprehensive plan, one can identify dozens of action items that this council should be addressing for the welfare of the people here in Georgetown County. I would humbly suggest that we, the people of Georgetown County, deserve to see evidence of good stewardship by making progress in addressing action items that have been identified as urgent needs for the welfare of the county and our citizens. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your service. My name is Georgine LaRusso. I'm the president of the Litchfield Brazes Homeowners Association in Polley's Island. A bunch of us are here to let you know that we are requesting your approval for a security gate at the entrance to a very small community on the marsh. We're right off Seventeen, near the Litchfield, quote, restaurant slash diner and the Shell Station. We're on the east side of Seventeen. There's eighteen members of our homeowners association. The developer developed our neighborhood while there were already some homes in the neighborhood, and some divided it. So, some of those homes are not in our association. The association owns the road. We take care of the road. We take care of the entire development with no contribution from non-HOA members. However, over the past few years, we've had concerns. There's a frontage road that runs through Seventeen. There's a lot of traffic, transient traffic. There's a gas station to one end, a cemetery to the other. We don't get a lot of problems from there. But what we get are a lot of transient folks either walking into our neighborhood. There's been a lot of building in our neighborhood. There have been break-ins in our neighborhood where people have come into garages, back porches. Many of you heard about a recent robbery, armed robbery, at the Polley's Ice Cream Store, which is maybe 500 feet from the entrance of our development. We are just asking for the permission to have that gate approved. And we've had some objection from the non-HOA members. There will be no cost to the non-HOA members unless they want an upgraded access. But there will be a code panel for them to access their homes. There will be no obstruction for them getting to their homes. HOA members, a Guinness Book of Records has happened. It was unanimously passed by our homeowners association to approve the gate. And not only approve it, the down payment has been paid for. So, people were putting their money where their mouth is. So, we'd like you to help us keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm one of the, actually, Litchfield Brazes Gate, we have a committee that we actually formed for the, for the gate, the building. I'm on that committee. I'm actually the committee leader. I'm sure you guys will have some questions at the end. But I'm not going to go on with, you already heard from Georgine. But we're a small community that we run against Seventeen. I'm the last house on the north, on the south end. And I have cameras in my house. My cameras go off. You wouldn't believe the amount of cars that come into our development. It is, it is crazy. They come in, I'm on the end, they turn around. And of course, my cameras go off every time a car comes down. You wouldn't think they would go off that much, but they go off ten, twenty times a day, just from cars coming, turning around, and leaving. So, we're just asking for, you know, we, two years ago, we had our roads re-sprayed with sealant. And with all the traffic, you know, already see the wear. That cost us $12,000 that the HOA had to pay for. So, we'd just like to limit the cost by all these cars coming in and out of development that really don't belong there. You know, it should be for residents. It's a dead end on each end. There's no reason for people to come in, turn around. You know, sometimes there was houses for sale, sometimes there wasn't houses for sale. So, there's really no reason for people to come into our community. And again, I'll talk a little bit about the people that, you know, break, broke into the house. You know, I retired after twenty-five years in law enforcement. So, a lot of people reach out to me when someone comes to their house or there's a problem in the neighborhood. So, I get, you know, it's amazing to me that, you know, people will just walk into our development, go on the back of people's porches. And some are afraid to call the police. We had one resident that, they were on a black, back porch. And actually, the guy had in his backpack, he had an accelerant in his backpack. And they didn't want to contact the police. They were afraid that he would come back. So, we have some that, you know, in our neighborhood that have had issues with people in their houses, and they're not reported. So, I just wanted to let you know about that. But any questions you have, feel free to ask. I know it's on the agenda for number fourteen, but I appreciate your time.
Greg Nethers?
Good evening. I'm a non-HOA member of the, of the Litchfield Brazes community. And I fully support the, the gate, even though, you know, financially, I'm not obligated to, to contribute. I will be contributing to the, to the financial finances of the, of the gate. I sent an email to several of you explaining some of the situations that we have. And certainly, the, the robbery that was just, you know, very, very close to our neighborhood supports the, the need for the security gate. So, again, I fully support our, our neighborhood keeping itself secure, and hopefully will too. Thank you.
William Cooper?
Good evening, council. I'm William Cooper. I live in the Polley's Island community. It's come to my attention that there is a business called Royal Farms that plans to open a large gas station near Litchfield. The business model of Royal Farms calls for 24-hour operation. This will cause continual noise and traffic for the community that surrounds the gas station. Idling trucks and travelers and RVs may use the gas station as an informal and free overnight stop. This will increase traffic and also disadvantage hotels and existing RV parks. Large roadside 24-hour businesses also serve as an attractive nuisance. They allow for off-hour gatherings of large points, of large groups of individuals, not all of whom are planning the next church picnic. Royal Farms states that they offer 24-hour free coffee for first responders in uniform. I worked in the automotive industry for more than thirty years, and in that time, had many occasions to interact with law enforcement as part of my job. Businesses that offer freebies to police are admitting that increased instances of criminality are expected at that location. And they offer such bonuses as form of free, but taxpayer-paid security. There is currently a petition circulating that has over a thousand signatures from neighbors that will be directly and negatively affected by this high-traffic gas station. Finally, the last thing that need that Litchfield and Polley's Islands areas needs are more high-traffic gas stations. What the area needs are free to enter public parks and recreation areas, public transportation, and some calming of Highway Seventeen traffic. This project accomplishes nothing in the public interest of our citizens, and only degrades the beauty of the area and increases the noise pollution, and will have a damaging effect on existing businesses. Thank you.
Jason Rosenberg?
All right, thank you all for having me again. Back to talk about trees and, and solar panels. So, trees, we all would agree, are great for the environment. And again, solar panels are great for the environment, at least at Beyonce. Trees work 100% of the time. A tree always works. A tree is great habitat. A tree is great for carbon sequestration. And a tree is great at buffering from floods. You cannot say the same about solar panels. The solar company here, they purchased the land, and it seems like they're trying to force our hand into making a decision about something that has forty-year, forty-year implications. Blighted property, we have properties in Andrews that they're trying to bring to the attention of the government to change the blighted properties in Andrews. Put solar panels there. Properties along the side of the highway, put solar panels there. Again, if you're intent on, on removing agricultural lands, then put it, put it in Francis Marion Forest. Don't put it in agriculture. In Kentucky, there's a Bill 266, which allows cities to prohibit solar panels from going in agricultural land. Do not remove agricultural land for solar panels. Over forty percent of local councils, like y'all, have voted down these, these proposals to change zoning from agricultural to light industrial slash solar fields. So, property values, property values decrease next to a solar field. I have property out there. I'm not going to enjoy the habitat from hunting out there or enjoy the, the nature that we do. And I can assure you, I've given more money to charities, and I take care of more people for free in this county that the solar panel company has ever done for Georgetown. Thank you.
Jerome Johnson?
Thank you. My name is Jerome Johnson. I'm a citizen of Andrews, South Carolina. Citizen of George Ancony also. I'm here on the behalf of Andrews Fire Station and Townhouse. We need to go ahead and finish funding so we can complete that building. The building is open to the element, and it's not helping it at all. And it's a bad sore eye for the town of Andrews. And I'm saying, it's time to stop kicking the can, put the can on the shelf, and complete the building. Thank you, and have a good, happy holiday. Thank you, and have a good, happy holiday.
Fan Stacy?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick. This is also about this gate issue before you. To remind you guys, you don't do this very frequently. I think we did one at Sweetgrass Marsh 10 or 12 years ago. I think you approved something like this at the Litchfield Villas about a year and a half ago. But I thought it might be helpful to quickly talk about this, this little neighborhood. It was commenced prior to the Great Recession. Mr. Goggins probably knows this neighborhood as, as well as anybody, but it was commenced prior to the Great Recession. And then it, it caught that developer, and so there are five properties on the north end that are not subject to the covenants that the current Litchfield Breezes enjoys, but the only access to these homes is through the Litchfield Breezes Road. Those homeowners are not asked to pay anything, and, and Litchfield Breezes is fine to maintain. Just to make sure we're clear, I'm sure Holly will deal with this in her report, this homeowners' association is willing to completely fund this, and there will be no cost to those that are not within the association. They can upgrade, like this gentleman here, to have easier access, but they will, they will not maintain anything, they won't have to pay to install anything, they will have a keypad access specifically for them to allow them to come and go. Planning Commission approved this. There's a little bit of opposition among some of those owners, but I'm not sure they're present tonight, but Planning Commission was unanimous in their approval. If you have questions about it, and the folks that designed it and talked about it are here, we'll be glad to follow through if you, if you have those questions.
Chairman, that's our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for your comments. We move down to the consent agenda. By virtue of the agenda being approved, we had six matters on the consent agenda which were approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That's procurement number 22-005, contract number 22-018, procurement number 22-051, procurement number 22-095, procurement number 22-102, and procurement number 22-104. We move down to resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number 22-30, Mr. Taylor, County Airport Manager.
Resolution 22-30, what we're asking for, we've applied for an EDA grant of 4.4 million for infrastructure improvements over on the decommissioned runway. If awarded, EDA funds 80% of the, the project, leaving 20% as a local match. The amount is not to exceed $881,548. As a requirement of the EDA, and it's specific to wording, these funds must be appropriated, committed, available, and unencumbered.
Could, could I ask you to speak closer into the mic? There's some noise outside, and I'm, I'm not hearing what you're saying.
How, how far back do I go?
Just continue where, from where you are.
Okay, well, that was pretty much a wrap on it. I'll hit it again. We applied for an EDA grant of $4,407,000. If awarded, the EDA funds 80% of the project, leaving a 20% local match. That local match is not to exceed $881,548. EDA's requirement, and it's very specific to wording, the funds must be appropriated, committed, available, and unencumbered. That is the request that we're, we're making with resolution 22-30. Anybody, any questions on the improvements?
No, I have one for County Administrator. This, if we approve this, this would be in next fiscal year budget?
Are there any additional questions from council for Mr. Taylor? Hearing now, is there a motion regarding resolution number 22-30?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 22, 22-18.
22-30, right?
22-30. No, I'm sorry, 22-30.
Okay. There's a motion by Councilman Newton for approval of resolution number 22-30. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to resolution number 22-32 from our county attorney, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council. Yes, this is simply a resolution to commit to negotiate a fee in lieu with Sherpa Six. Sherpa Six is an aviation company that has been out at the airport for some time now, several months at least. They are involved in some development out there, building hangars and other things, and I think this would simply allow our Economic Development Department to work out a fee-in-lie agreement with them to help with the continuation of that development and their operation.
Thank you, Attorney Watson. Any questions, any questions with Councilman Watson? I mean Attorney Watson, I'm sorry.
Not on your line, sir. You got a motion. Uh, yes.
Um, no question, is there a motion regarding resolution number 22-32?
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of resolution 22-32.
There's a motion for adoption from Councilor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Resolution number 22-32 is adopted. We'll move on down to third reading of ordinances, ordinance number 22-19. Madam Administrator?
Good evening. We are bringing, we are bringing this back to you to request that we table the proposal that we brought before you to do bonds. We have gotten a recent report from Alsemar, basically discussing with us how very expensive this project has become. Certainly, we recognize that there are supply chain issues, but also the costs have nearly doubled since our original estimates. We want to table this project at this time and come back for your consideration in the third quarter of 2023.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Do we need a motion for it? Is, is there a motion from council to table ordinance number 22-19?
Chairman, I make a motion that we do as the administrator requests, and we table ordinance number 22-19.
There's a motion to table from Councilman Steve Goggins. Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Ordinance number 22-19 is hereby tabled. We'll move down to second reading of ordinances. Ms. Richardson, regarding ordinance number 22-40.
Yes, sir. This is an amendment to Article 6 of the zoning ordinance dealing with the Preservation Agriculture District. And this is basically a housekeeping item. We did feel that it was significant enough not to be considered a clerical error or something that we did need to bring before you, but I do think it is a matter of two conflicting sections of the ordinance that we need to clear up. See, looking at me, Councilmember Newton. The PA District was created back in '07 and '08, basically when we zoned the rural portions of the county. It was created exclusively, almost in the northern part of the county, along the PD River, and there's a map in your packet that the green areas are zoned PA. You don't hear a lot about this district, but we basically put the PA District in areas that already had conservation easements on them that were not designated for development because the PA District has a minimum lot size of 25 acres per unit. We do allow in that district them to cluster, so if you had 100 acres, for example, you're only allowed a total of four units, but you could cluster them in one section, maybe cluster them down near the river, but you couldn't exceed one unit per 25 acres. The current language in our ordinance states that it allows for dwellings on lots not exceeding one acre, as long as the density limit is maintained. This doesn't give us a minimum lot size, and it seems to indicate that a lot over one acre in size would not be allowed. Traditionally, in zoning, we give a minimum acreage size, not a maximum, and Article 7 of our zoning ordinance refers to the minimum as one acre. So it's staff's opinion that the original intent of the ordinance was meant to allow for home sites in PA districts on lots that are actually larger than an acre, as long as the overall tract maintains the density. So we have proposed that change in the ordinance text, and the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from Ms. Richardson from council?
Yes, I have one, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Richardson, during the planning meeting, did anybody speak out against that?
Okay. Any further questions from, from council for planning director? Saying there's a motion regarding ordinance number 22-40.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We move for, we have a motion from Councilman Newton for approval regarding ordinance number 22-40. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will move down to ordinance number 22-41, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. This proposed change actually deals with the official zoning map for Georgetown County, and we currently define the official zoning map as one that is signed by Mr. Chairman and is located in the office of the administrative officer or the office of county council. The current language says that changes are to be made to that map within 15 days of council approval, and the ordinance refers to the official map as the final authority as to the current status of zoning. As you know, we currently maintain our zoning map through the GIS department. Changes that you approve at these meetings are forwarded to GIS staff once they are approved, and the digital map is then amended accordingly. The digital map is available online, and it's used by both staff and the general public to review zoning of a particular parcel. We do not use paper maps. We don't go and check a paper map when we get a call for zoning confirmation that GIS layers are what we use. As you know, the zoning map can actually be changed as often as twice a month, as you have a meeting and we get third reading approvals. Printing out a large new map, that often is not feasible, nor is it very easy to determine zoning on a small parcel on the walk of my neck on a large map that's printed out of all of Georgetown County. The language in the zoning ordinance, we feel, is outdated and does not reflect the current method that we use for updating and reviewing our zoning map. So staff proposed amending the text to state that the digital files that comprise the zoning map are referenced as official, and they are made part of the zoning ordinance and giving the same force and effect as our original paper maps. The Planning Commission held a public hearing. There was no one who came forward to speak, and they unanimously recommended approval for the change that's in your packet.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from Ms. Richardson from council? Hearing now, is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-41?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 22-41.
There's a motion for approval from Councilman Goggins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Listen carries. Ms. Richardson, keeping you pretty busy tonight, I'll be.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ordinance number 22-42.
This is a proposed ordinance to update the 2018 International Building Codes. Our existing building code ordinance are the 2018 codes, and they were adopted back in January 28th of 2020. The proposed ordinance that you have before you provides for the 2021 International Residential Code, 2021 Building Code, and the associated codes that have been adopted by the state. We've also proposed some minor changes to our building code ordinance that reflect basically the requirement that they turn in a PDF set of plans, some extensions in terms of review time, and the elimination of smaller projects that are listed as not requiring a permit that we do currently review and that need to be reviewed by our office. I do have our building official, Mr. Stephen Elliott, is here if you have more specific questions about the building code that I can't answer.
Thank you. Any questions from council regarding?
Can't let Mr. Elliott off the hook all evening. I see he's sitting in the very back.
He does have a tie on, too.
The only thing I would ask is, I did have a recent meeting with Mr. Elliott, and the codes are, the interplay between FEMA, the FEMA requirements and the building codes is becoming increasingly complex. And I would just simply ask, are there any concerns you have about amendments to the new codes and anything that we should be aware of that is particularly striking to you?
As most of you know, we do have pending new firm maps that will be adopted on May 9th, 2023. With those new maps comes a new, they're not calling it a flood zone, but it's a flood area known as a coastal A, which is delineated by a limited and moderate wave action line, or LIMWAL for short. FEMA guidance right now basically makes it optional if you choose to enforce the more restrictive measures in coastal A. However, the building code went a step further and says that if you have maps that have that delineated area on it, that you will enforce the higher standard of the coastal A. Now, what that means is, going forward, if you're in the coastal A zone, you're in what is known now as an AE flood zone. New construction will have to adhere to VE flood zone construction practices. In other words, an AE zone home would be elevated under FEMA guidelines to the finished floor above the base flood elevation. However, with coastal A, an AE zone home will be elevated to the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural memory, which means the homes will have to be elevated a little higher. They will also not benefit from the county ordinance that allows a home in an AE flood zone to enclose the entire footprint of the home that they would like for storage, parking, building access. They will be restricted to 299 square feet and will have to adhere to breakaway wall construction practices. Any businesses that find themselves in that coastal A, non-residential structures, currently a non-residential structure in an AE flood zone is allowed to do what is known as floodproofing. So in other words, if you're, would normally have to elevate, if it was a residential structure, and your BFE was 12, and your grade was at 11, an elevator structure would have to be built so that the finished floor was at 13 feet, that's above mean sea level. So basically, you'd be three feet above the grade. A, a non-residential building or a commercial business in an AE zone has the option to do what's known as floodproofing, which means they could put in the floodproofing measures that went up that three feet, protecting that building and not have to elevate. But now, a, a business in that coastal A zone that has to adhere to VE zone standards loses the ability to floodproof because VE construction standards does not allow floodproofing as an option. I, my personal opinion is, when the state was going, was going through the code hearings, being that it only affected coastal counties, I don't think anyone involved in the hearings recognized this potential problem. I tried to get an audience with the building codes council and was turned down because the code hearings had been completed and... the code hearings had been completed and the 21 code had been adopted. So it's going to have some impacts in certain areas of Georgetown County, not just along the coast, because Councilman Morant, you may find this interesting, but that coastal A zone cuts up into the Wedgefield community and goes as far inland as the northwest side of the great PD River, encompassing some of the plantation houses along those, along the river. What that means is if they're in an AE flood zone and they get substantially damaged or completely damaged, it has to be rebuilt. They would have to build to a VE flood zone construction, which most people think of as oceanfront construction. But as I understand it, the county council as a local body basically is powerless to amend this out because it is inbuilt. So we kind of have to, we're stuck with it unless we can find another avenue to get, should council choose to get out of it, but I think it's problematic for the county myself. But that's my opinion.
I share your opinion. I think it's going to exert a lot of hardship on homeowners, businesses in some cases. Couple of thoughts. One is that I think the planning director should examine impact to height because obviously as we have to continue to move up to meet VE and AE requirements, AE coastal requirements, that vertical envelope continues to be compressed. I see Mr. Elliott in the background, akin to Stephen Elliott. But this will greatly impact businesses on Business 17 and Merle's Inlet. It'll render a bunch of them nonconforming. And new construction would, there'd be some hardship in terms of, you know, elevating and things like that and not being allowed to floodproof, which is a common practice in other parts of the state. For instance, a great deal of downtown Charleston buildings are floodproofed, even new construction versus elevating up off the, off the ground. So my second suggestion would be, this slipped by our legislator, legislature, it slipped by us. I think we need to, as a county, try to engage our legislative delegation and see if they can make some progress towards amending things in Columbia as soon as we can. And would respectfully ask the administrator to, to make those inquiries. I'm happy to, even though my time has passed, I'm happy to assist ad hoc as needed. Appreciate it.
Okay, that's, any further questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have something for Ms. Richardson. We have this in front of us. Why do we have it in front of us if it's got these problems that we know exist?
It's my understanding that we don't have a choice at this stage to adopt what the state has told us to adopt in terms of building code. Next year, we've got to adopt this next.
So they're dictating from Columbia that we have to adopt this?
Yes, they do make some things optional, but, but the actual residential code and the building code itself, we have to adopt what's said by the state.
We have no power to go back and, and alter any of this building code.
Not that portion of it that Stephen just described at this time.
So what happens if we don't approve it? We deny it?
If we don't adopt the building code, the new building code?
The new one.
It's for the whole county, but the impact.
As I understand it, we don't have a choice of adopting the code because that is the adopted building in South Carolina. Now, South Carolina does write its own version of the code because there's certain amendments that they placed in the code and have been doing so for years. One example is the removal of the residential sprinkler system from the code. South Carolina amends that out every year. So back in 2015, they began asking for their own version of the building code. So it's the International Building and Residential Codes and the associated codes. The South Carolina modifications are incorporated into the body of the text, and South Carolina gets its own codebook with the amendments incorporated into the codebook. So once it goes through those hearings and the state legislature adopts the code and says, okay, we've done the hearing process, we fleshed it out, and this is what the changes we want to make, this is what we're approving, then it's up to the local municipalities and counties to adopt these building codes. Some of the codes are optional, some are mandatory. The ones that we're talking about are mandatory. One of the optional codes, for instance, is the International Swimming Pool Code. I opted not to adopt, asked to adopt the 21 code because there's not that many changes from the 18, and it's an additional expense of buying newer codebooks. So that's one of the optional codes. There's an existing building code that architects and designers use. I opted not to ask to adopt that because we did for the first time in 2020, if memory serves me correct, and it was only asked to be used twice in that time period. And we can enforce building code requirements without that additional book. So some of the codes are optional, some are mandatory. And it seems that the state has taken the position that, you know, you had your chance to get these amendments in, and some were overlooked. They recently had an emergency hearing. So there is an avenue to get a code changed. They had an emergency hearing to remove a bathroom situation, for example. When South Carolina, some of the, I'm not sure who discovered it, but commercial buildings as written by IPC would have been required to put in gender-neutral bathroom facilities. In other words, male and female could use the same multi-gang toilet facilities, and it was a requirement they be placed in every public building. Well, the state had an emergency hearing once they realized that was indicated and created an immediate amendment to have that removed because they didn't want males and females, without any penalty, to be able to use the same restroom facilities.
So it looks like with the, even with the housing problem we have even on the walk of my neck, by passing this, we're just driving up the cost even higher for these middle, middle wage earners to live in that area.
There could be increased costs, yes.
It's the period, from the way it sounds, it could be substantial in some construction.
And the other issue is, you know, Councilman Goggins was instrumental in changing our ordinance when, when I took this position, every home that was elevated along the coast in an AE or VE flood zone was restricted to 299 square feet of enclosed space for storage. FEMA won't allow you to go larger than a VE zone. That's written in Code of Federal Regulation 44. But there was no maximum or minimum for AE construction. That was a local, more stringent measure that was placed in Georgetown by ordinance years ago as part of a way to get points on the CRS program, which is the Community Reduction System. So with more individuals needing or wanting that increased storage area, we amended the Georgetown County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance so that that larger footprint could be enclosed. The allowed uses did not change, and the flood construction practices did not change, but it gave people a larger storage area. Now, those homes will immediately become nonconforming once the new firm maps get adopted. And if they were to renovate and fall into that substantial improvement, substantial damage window, those larger enclosed footprints would have to be reduced back down to 299 square feet.
So our only hope in, is getting any of this change is through our state legislature?
Yes.
Is this, is, and Steve, chime in if you know, is, is this something that's hard to do? Is it common that it's been done before?
Well, getting amendments in the legislature, I would imagine, are always going to be a challenge, you know? It's, it's, has to be voted on by the entire body. But we could get our, we could certainly gate our own delegation and get them active in pursuing it. There's been discussion.
Counties have the ability to reach out to the building codes council with proposed ordinance that would only be specific to Georgetown County. One, for instance, was years ago, the, they took a more protective measure requiring exterior disdisnacks below the pavement on every residential structure. That's not in the National Electric Code. That's just a more protective measure that Georgetown County adopted. So while I was not employed by the county at that time, that's the procedure, is you take your amendment to the code that you want to adopt. If the building codes council gives it its blessing to it, then they would allow you to go for or proceed with adopting that for one particular measure. But this particular code with the more restrictive measures than what FEMA is requiring, I think would be beneficial to counties all along the coast, not just Georgetown County.
As, as far as having an amendment to the code, Attorney Watson, what is your opinion, I would think?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I think there's a few things. One, everything I'm going to say, I'm going to caveat with, let me take a deeper look at this, all right? As for what the, or the council, excuse me, may need to do tonight, one of the questions that I was just asking, Ms. Richardson, is whether there is a deadline on when the county, assuming what Mr. Elliott has said, that the county doesn't have an option in this, what's the deadline for acting? And Ms. Richardson, you said that is first of January or sometime first of the year? Is that correct? All right. Referencing back to the other matter that was on for third reading that you tabled, what I would suggest, just as a practical matter, to try to put the county in the best position so that we aren't too tied up against any deadlines, you can vote on this for second reading. It's still got to come up for third reading. In the meantime, let me look into it more fully. I would suggest that the concerns that are being raised tonight and that the council appears to have, that you immediately talk with your legislative delegation and see what help they can get. And then if by the next meeting, when it's up for third reading, we see that there may be some other way to move forward on this, it does not have to go forward at the third reading. Now, that's, that's one option. The other is not to take any action on it. So then people from Columbia may want to do bad things to us. It is, you know, good luck. Let's have that discussion. There is another question that arises as to, you know, what are insurance? If, if we are not, we, if the county does not adopt it and construction goes forward and there's some state mandate that it conformed to the new building code, what does the insurance industry say about that? There's just too many different moving parts here, and I think it probably needs a little more inquiry. So again, do you want to just move it forward on the second and give us more time? But then perhaps it gets tabled or no action's taken at the third reading before it becomes a final ordinance. But is there a specific question that you had, Mr. Morant?
Now, I really was alluding to what Mr. Elliott was talking about as far as doing a specific amendment for Georgetown County to a particular ordinance to take a look at something along those lines. And as you state, we can, if we were to pass second reading, at least we would not be delaying the vote in accordance with what the state requires, and then we can always defer it at third reading, that may be a decent option.
Correct. And as far as either an amendment specific to Georgetown, as Mr. Elliott suggested, or other options, I don't know, sitting here tonight. This is the first time this issue's been brought to my attention. I think certainly that the concerns y'all are raising are very valid, and I hate to see it go into an ordinance and then have to unwind it or try to unwind it at some later date due to all the problems with construction costs, other things that it's inevitably going to bring.
Okay. Okay.
So your advice is to proceed with the second reading, even as we're researching?
Simply because of a timeline. If there wasn't a timeline or, you know, there was, there wasn't some other considerations that might affect, you know, inaction by the council, then I would say take no action on it. But I think because there appears to be some timeline and some other considerations, at least move it forward, but with the idea that before you, I would caution you, you know, of moving forward on third reading until you have some of your questions answered.
And I'd like to give emphasis to Mr. Elliott's suggestion, we approach the Building Code Congress too as a, as a county, in addition to reaching out to the legislative delegation.
I do think that would carry a weight than, you know, me just doing it on my own. But as I said, I did reach out to SCLLR, Molly Price, to try to at least get an audience with the building codes council, and that was denied. But in talking with some of my counterparts in Ory County and City of Myrtle Beach, they were both unaware that that more restrictive measure was in the code. And that's the part of it that I find interesting is the code has always been the bare minimum building code requirement. While a lot of folks complain about the requirements that we try to enforce, that's the least you can do to make a building safe. But yet, in this instance, they've gone to a more restrictive measure than what CFR 44 is, which is the Code of Federal Regulation for FEMA and flood enforcement. Any more questions?
One question. One question. If there was a USBA project and a South Carolina Housing Trust project, construction or renovation, and we have our county inspectors, who takes precedent over approving a project? If it's a USBA funding project or South Carolina Housing Trust project, and we have our county inspectors, who gives final approval to that? Or?
Building official.
Okay.
Yeah, both projects would be permitted through our office. Now, while USBA would probably have special inspectors come in, and most commercial projects, depending on what it is, has some required special inspections to be done. That's like structural steel, bolting, tensions, welding, geotechnical inspections, slump testing for concrete. All of those are inspections that would fall outside of my department. But at the end of the day, the final approval would come from the building department here in Georgetown.
Hey, thank you.
I have one other quick question. If, if this goes through as it's written through third approval and we have no choice in it, this becomes in effect at that time? So constructions that have already been permitted, they're, they're good to go?
Anything that's already been permitted, anything that is in office with all of the proper plans and documents that's needed to permit a project that's in-house before the adoption of this code will be reviewed under the 2018 code.
Or the, I take it the majority of our local contractors know that this monster is sitting at their doorstep?
And the contractors, they pass that call. And the contractors, they pass that call to?
Oh, yeah, most, yeah, they're going to pass it on, most definitely. All right, thank you.
I have one question. How often is the code updated?
Every three years. And we're always one cycle behind. They're already writing the 23 codes, it's probably already written, fixed to go into pretty few process nationwide for code amendments and changes.
Thank you both. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22 dash 42?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a resolution dash 22, I lost my place here, 2241, 42, excuse me, with direction to the administrator and her staff that we do more research and hopefully obtain some clarification before we move into third reading.
We have a motion from Councilman Goggins for adoption of ordinance number 22 dash 42 for second reading with the copy that the administrator and her staff conduct more investigation regarding the impact of that ordinance on the county. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I reluctantly second the motion.
We have a second from Councilman Newton reluctantly. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries for second reading with the caveat. We'll move on down to first reading of ordinances. These ordinance will be read into the record for first reading by title only. Ordinance number 22 dash 43, an ordinance authorizing county council and all Georgetown County boards and commissions to maintain order in public county meetings and to enforce rules for business and conduct matters related thereto. Ordinance number 22 dash 44, an amendment to the Georgetown County Comprehensive Plan Natural Resources Element. Ordinance number 22 dash 45, to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to reflect a zoning change for a parcel located on Highway 17 in Paulus Island, TMS number 04 dash 0141 dash 090 dash 02 dash 00 for medium density residential to commercial. Ordinance number 22 dash 46, to rezone a portion of one acre of one parcel totaling approximately .59 acre located at 13160 Ocean Highway, TMS number 04 dash 0141 dash 090 dash 02 dash 00 from R10 to GC. Ordinance number 22 dash 47, an ordinance to lease to Sherpa Six Inc. all those parcels of land at the Georgetown County Airport that are currently under license to Sherpa Six Incorporated. We'll move down to reports to council. Ms. Richardson, I plan to direct you.
Yes, sir, this is the request for the gate at Litchfield Breezes that you heard about under public input. This gate is proposed to be installed on Cool Breeze Lane, which is a private road located off Breeze Lane in Litchfield. Litchfield Breezes is an existing single-family development of 19 single-family dwellings. One dwelling's under construction and two vacant lots. There is a smaller development that you heard about called Cane Patch at Litchfield Breezes that has five single-family homes, a duplex and two vacant lots, and those are located at the northern end of Windy Lane. Those units are not part of the Litchfield Breezes HOA, and the only access for seven of the lots is through Windy Lane. This is a private road that is owned by the HOA for Litchfield Breezes, however, the remaining, the 120 feet at the end of Windy Lane, is owned by Smithland LLC, which was the developer of the Cane Patch Development Project. The applicant's request is to add a security gate that would be located at the front of Cool Breeze Lane. As you have heard, some concerns were expressed from the Cane Patch neighborhood regarding the ability to access their property. As Mr. Stacy indicated, the Litchfield Breeze HOA has offered to allow them access through a keypad that they do not have to pay for, they will not have to exit their vehicle to use, so they will be able to access their lot through the gate. They do have the option of paying for the gate and having some sort of clicker or sticker on their windows such that it would automatically open for them. County staff contacted Midway Fire about the location of the gate and the plans for the gate. They've stated they will need to comply with their regulations before they can grant final approval. Staff feels that there is adequate turnaround room for the gate at its current location, and the reason that we are here before you with this is because our land development regs require that for a gate to be put up at an existing single-family neighborhood, you need a recommendation from the planning commission and final approval from county council. The planning commission did discuss this back in November 18th. During public input, we had four residents speak in support of the gate and one in opposition. The commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval for the gate. And this is not an ordinance change, this is basically a one-vote type approval that they are looking for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council, from Ms. Richardson?
One, one quick one, Ms. Richardson, how many residents are not members of the HOA?
I'm not sure about those in Litchfield Breezes, but Cane Patch does have 11. Someone says 11 non-HOA members.
How many total residents that would be entering and exiting through this gate?
About 30 is what the HOA president still.
And there will be no calls to the non-HOA, correct? None whatsoever?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any additional question for council, from Ms. Richardson?
Holly, I'm sure you addressed this, but, you know, of course, there was a fire in Litchfield Breezes, so the fire department has issued its approval?
Yes, they'll have to have the code that the siren releases the gate or a crash through.
Gotcha.
Ability, yes.
Good, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm not sure if it applies here, I was just asking Mr. Stacy, I think he represents them. One of the things I would suggest to council is also maybe make it subject to any easements for public services and utilities. I can tell you that that department is having a difficult time of late getting some of their necessary easements for stormwater projects, fallouts, pipes, other things like that through private properties. And so it may be something where, you know, if if appropriate, and again, I'm not sure it does, but I'm trying to think ahead before we get too far down this.
So Mr. Watson, you would suggest that before we approve, made any approval, we obtain an easement or?
Maybe, not, well, not necessarily, but just subject to any that might, you know, moving forward.
I think what Mr. Watson's asking, will we make sure that that says to many county advantages, but Georgia County Water District, Waterline, CNT Cooper, Powerline, Rockaway, will we make sure that it is available for that? And the answer to that, absolutely, so if you want to make that a caveat of anything you choose to do tonight, we fully fix that.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Stacy.
Ms. Richardson, I'd just like to understand, is my understanding that this is a private road that's owned by the homeowners association?
Yes.
And the other homeowners there are in the adjoining homeowner, they're just passing through that particular private road that's owned by the association to get to their residences?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess I just want to assure again, as Mr., as Councilman Newton was saying, there will be no cost whatsoever to the adjoining property owners to get through the gate.
That's correct.
Okay. Any additional questions for Ms. Richardson? Okay. Is there a motion regarding Ms. Richardson's report?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance, again, I think I've been here too long tonight, I've lost my place again, for Litchfield Breeze Community, Windy Lane, and that we make that approval subject to any easements that may be required for public services, utilities, et cetera.
You've heard the motion from Councilman Goggins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Sure, thank you. We'll move on to annual impact fee report. Ms. Richardson.
Sir, last one. This is a report on impact fee activity in the county over the past year. Ms. Langston and I worked on this report together, the majority of the numbers and spreadsheet that you see there are, of course, hers. The county adopted impact fees back in 2009 and began collection in 2010. This report only deals with development impact fees, which include recreation, libraries, transportation, and law enforcement. We also collect fire impact fees in both of our fire districts. Those are not included in this report, they are handled under a separate ordinance and were in place prior to the development impact fees. State law does restrict how we use our development impact fees, they can only be used for capital projects that were identified in a previous report when we passed the ordinance, and they can't be used for operating costs. I have attached the report here in your document, it talks about the collection expenditures and the trends that relate to the fees. In fiscal year 22, the development impact fees generated $1,638, $193, which is down somewhat from fiscal year 2021. And I think that's probably due to some significant multifamily development we had in those years, which upped the impact fee numbers that year. We do have, as you know, a consultant working on a new report for impact fees, a review of our current fees, and that report is generally completed and under review. I will need to go to the planning commission for their recommendation and review, and then to this body for your acceptance and review as well.
Okay, comments from, any questions from, from Ms. Richardson? Mr. Goggins?
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that, as was stated in the report, that staff is working with a consultant on a new study involving the future development, impact of impact fees, and since the draft study is nearing completion, I'd like to request staff present the draft document and findings to the planning commission for their review. Subsequently, request that the commission send a recommendation to this body in time for the March 24th council meeting. I'll make sure I show up.
Okay.
This would allow council to use the information and recommendations presented in fiscal year 2024 budget preparation process.
If it happened, already been planned, maybe we could have a small workshop.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, questions for Ms. Richardson regarding the annual impact fee report?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. There's no. Okay, let's move on down to presentation. As you all are aware, Councilor Steve Goggins, second term of Georgetown County Council is coming to a close, with tonight being his last regular council meeting as a representative of Council District 6. Steve was first elected to county council in November of 2014 and was subsequently reelected to his second term of service in November 2018. Councilor Goggins has served faithfully and diligently representing the citizens of Georgetown County. So on behalf of Georgetown County, we would like to express our appreciation to Councilor Steve Goggins. We appreciate your expertise you have shared with council during your years of serving, and we are looking forward to your continuous expertise for the county of Georgetown. So we're going to miss the expertise you have given us, especially throughout the building department and the building codes and those type of regulations. We really appreciate your service, Steve. We, we would like to present a plaque to you. a motion to defer the approval of our minutes for November 8, 2022?
No move.
I have a motion by Councilor Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Any further business to come before council this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement, please.
Thank you.
Since this is Councilman Goggins' last meeting, if I didn't say this, I would hate myself, but it has been an honor and a privilege to serve with him the last few years. Steve was one of the first council members that befriended me when I won my first election. And the only thing I request of Steve, please don't change your phone number.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor.
Thank you. Councilman Goggins, any further comments, business to come before council this evening? Hearing that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Goggins, it's your last chance to make a motion.
I think we ought to carry on for a couple more hours, it's kind of interesting. I make a motion that we adjourn, and it's, again, been with great honor and privilege to have served the county and served with my colleagues. Thank you.
Motion by Councilor, Councilman Goggins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion and saying goodbye to Steve on council? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Steve.[1642.38]